Okay. Parting has started.
All right, great. Thank you. As was mentioned, my name is Charlotte Archer and I am the Hearing Examiner for the City of Shelton. We are here today on September 30th at 1:03 PM to hear testimony and evidence in the matter of the Coffee Creek Preliminary Platte. This is an application for a preliminary plat for a subdivision project. The application number is subdivision 0106-2023. I understand the owner applicant is Robert Terhune and the agent is Larson and Associates, Mr. Grant Middleton. Is the applicant present in the room? Can you raise your hand? Okay. And then the city is represented by Mr. Dozy. I apologize, is it Dozy or Doze? I've never asked that.
Doze.
Doze, okay. Mr. Doze. And then we also have present members of the public. So the process for today's hearing is as follows. The city has delegated authority, the city council has delegated authority to the Hearings Examiner pursuant to Chapter 1916 of the Shelton Municipal Code, such that the Hearings Examiner makes decisions on preliminary plat matters. And the criteria upon which the decision is based is outlined in Shelton Municipal Code 1916060. And that outlines that my decision shall be based on the record as established in this hearing. And so in order to be part of the record for today, testimony must be offered during today's hearing. There is also email correspondence and other records that will refer to within the hearing that are part of the record. But for the most part, the record itself will be established in today's open record hearing. In order to approve a preliminary plat application pursuant to Chapter 1916, the Hearings Examiner must make written findings that appropriate provisions are made for the public health, safety, and general welfare, and that such open spaces, drainage ways, streets or roads, alleys, other public ways, transit stops, water supplies, sanitary wastes, parks and rec, playgrounds, schools, and other relevant facts, including sidewalks and other planning features that assure safe walking conditions for those students who walk to school, and public use and interest will be served by the plating of this subdivision and its dedication. So my analysis has to make findings as to all of those issues. The Hearings Examiner must also find that the proposed preliminary plat is consistent with the City of Shelton's comprehensive plan and the Shelton Municipal Code, and provides for all improvements required in the City of Shelton and the City of Shelton's design and construction standards. So my choices based on the delegation of authority are to approve, to approve with conditions, or to deny when I'm faced with a plat application of this nature. So that's the legal framework for why we are here today as the Hearings Examiner. That is my role. The procedures that we will undertake, first, we will hear briefly from the staff and we will talk about the exhibits that staff submitted that have been publicly available on the city's website. Gosh, how long have they, when did they get posted? At least a month or so, correct?
Officially, for the hearing, people were noticed they were posted over a month ago, but they've been up, they have been up on our website for several months prior to rendering a SEPA determination back in July.
All right, perfect. And we'll talk a bit more about that in a moment. But we'll go through those documents with staff. Then we will hear from the applicant, whomever they choose to have represent them in this hearing. And then we will hear from the public. And then this is your opportunity, as I mentioned before, to offer your testimony with regards to this application and all the issues that I just listed that are within my power to evaluate. This is your opportunity. Your testimony will be recorded in this recording and I will also be taking notes and I may ask for questions because your participation in this hearing provides you with legal standing as it relates to this matter. I will ask you to state your name and I will also swear you in because you are testifying under oath that what you're saying is true and accurate. So we will ask you to go to the podium and provide that testimony at the time when we're in that portion of the hearing. Excuse me. I would note that the public comment period, just as is the case if you were to testify at the city council, is not a back and forth conversation. It's your opportunity to give us your input on the application. And then following the completion of public comment, we will have a period where the applicant can respond to any questions that you may have asked as a group and staff may also weigh in. And then the applicant will have the final word as it relates to the submittal. And I will take the members of the audience in person prior to the members of the audience that are online, but know that I am cognizant we have folks online as well. All right. With that, Mr. Doze, if you want to kick us off as the staff representative, please, for the record, and I believe you already said it, but identify yourself and your role at the city and orient us to the documents that are part of the record.
My name is Jason Doze. I'm a city planner for the City of Shelton. Generally speaking, I'm kind of a hub for review of development projects such as this, you know, working with our other departments, water, sewer, storm drainage, fire, building, and just public works in general. What I submitted to the Hearings Examiner prior to the meeting and has been available on our website is the staff report, which I do have copies of in the back of the room. The staff report's been available on the city's website for about two weeks. It was amended slightly on the 25th, however. It was up originally on the 18th, I believe, and we made some minor edits on the 25th and re-uploaded it, mostly as it relates to the wording of a couple of conditions. The staff report references several attachments. There's 16, in fact. Do you want me to actually name them or just reference that they're in there? I mean, they include things like grading and drainage plans. They include the SEPA determination, the water analysis, their plat maps, geotechnical reports, storm drainage reports, traffic studies, wetland, you know, particular areas analysis, those sorts of things. Is it fine to just reference them generally because they are specifically enumerated in the staff report?
Yeah, that's sufficient. You said there's copies of the staff report available in the back of the room?
Correct. Yeah, not with all the attachments, though. I'm not.
They're listed at page, where are they listed? They're listed at page 14 of your staff report, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So to the extent there's nothing other than the 16 that are listed on that page, then you don't need to walk through each one. But I would, hearing no objection, I would pre-admit all of those materials as part of the record. Beyond those materials, I understand you received email comments today. And there are some comments attached in the 16 pages of material, correct? The DNS comments are, yeah, okay.
Yes. The comments received during the environmental routing process are included. I did receive an email correspondence and I actually forwarded you the short back and forth we had from a Mr. Joe Cagle, who is a resident in one of the adjacent subdivisions. So that, I suppose, we could call Attachment 17?
Yes, I will make that Exhibit 17. Has the applicant received a copy of that email exchange?
You know, they have not. I can give them the copy I have, actually. And then I can just make another copy, make a note to myself. Okay. I just handed them a copy. Thank you for reminding me. Didn't even think of giving them a copy.
Not a problem. And just to confirm, I'm giving them the chance to read it, so I'm filling time. But hearing no objection, I will admit that as Exhibit 17, unless I'm hearing an objection, but I don't think I am. So we'll have that be Exhibit 17. Joe Cagle's email thread. Any additional correspondence other than administrative emails between my office and your office regarding scheduling this matter? Any other materials other than the 16 listed in the staff report you're looking to admit today?
No.
Okay. And I will make the administrative emails between you and I about scheduling matters Exhibit 18.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Just ready.
Okay. So now, Mr. Doze, if you want to dive in substantively to the application, your staff report is rather comprehensive. However, I think for the folks in the room, it would be helpful for you to at least give an overview of the the application as a starting point for today.
Absolutely, yes. Do you want me to swear in?
Yes, thank you. Do you swear and affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth in this proceeding today?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you'll entertain me here, I'd like to just share my screen just so I have a couple of graphics to reference. So what I'm going to be referencing, I hope, I was having some issues with this earlier today, are, just to orient everyone, what I'd like to start with is a graphic I've sent out numerous times. I'm sure the residents in the room probably recognize this. This has been sent out on multiple occasions for the Notice of Application Process, SEPA. I attached it to the public hearing. But it just gives a good overview of context as it relates to existing improvements in town in case anyone's got any, you know, questions about that. So the area you see on this, this is actually Attachment 1, the project site location map. The area in yellow are the project boundaries. These are the properties that are owned in common by the applicant. It entails several different assessors parcel numbers. It's just a hair under 100 acres. It's 97.43 acres. And what you see here is the existing Eaglewood subdivision to the northeast. You see the Grandview Heights subdivision to the east. There's some county larger lot development to the south and to the west. It's kind of a storage facility, mobile home park to the west. Deegan Road, which is a little-known road to many residents in the City of Shelton, is located parallel to US 101 at the far west end of the applicant's property. And it actually does touch the property at the far southwest corner down in this location. The city owns a large piece of property on the north side of the site. That is a piece of property that is held in conservation, acquired by the city following litigation between a logging company and the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. So with that, I will go into the second graphic, which I will leave up for a bulk of my presentations because it, unfortunately, I can't get it to format much better than this. But to orient you compared to the aerial photograph, this is the Eaglewood subdivision right in here. This is Grandview Heights. The Deegan Road I was referencing, the Parallels 101, down here. So in general, what the applicant proposes is subdivision of this 97-acre piece of property into 364 residential lots. This would include full street improvements, curb, gutter, sidewalk, parking on both sides of the street, drainage improvements, parks, trails, and the like located through the plat. They plan on, or they're proposing, rather, to develop in five phases with the initial phase being up here on the north end would provide a connection between the Grandview Heights neighborhood and Eaglewood and develop the area directly east or directly west of the Eaglewood subdivision. As part of those Phase 1 improvements, they would be installing a gravity sewer main down through Deegan Road East and out to Railroad Avenue to city limits. So it's over a linear mile, I believe, of gravity sewer main they'd be installing to carry the flow from a bulk of this subdivision. Because downstream in some areas to the east, there are some restrictions in sewer. And that just frankly solves any concerns with sewer, that they're gravitating on their basically own-sized line and it would be available for other people along that line to connect into in the future. The lots vary in size from 4,500 square feet to over 12,000 square feet, depending on where they're at. Some of the cul-de-sac lots are larger. A lot of the bulk of the lots that are located in the midsection where you're going to have some flatter topography once they grade are largely 4,500 square feet or just above that. As part of, actually back up just a little bit. So this, I was talking with a few of the neighbors before the hearing and as a little background, you know, this site has been the source of several development proposals in the fairly recent past. Little known fact, in the 80s, it did have an approved mining permit on it that was never exercised, which frankly, I'm puzzled as to why anyone would want to mine this site because there doesn't seem to be any minable gravel. But that is a true statement. There was a mining permit on the site in the 80s, never exercised. It had a subdivision request that was processed for quite some time by the city in 2006, between about 2006 and 2008. At that time, the city had some challenging conditions present at our main sewer treatment plant. So that was quite a hurdle to try to get any development of this scale over at that time. And then kind of the nail in the coffin, so to speak, was of course, the Great Recession and housing bubble burst in 2008, 2009. That project ended up expiring, did not move forward, didn't even get to hearing, actually. Then in 2021, this same applicant did apply for a subdivision on this site. We began the process, sent out a notice of application at that time. And as they started vetting out some of the inherent challenges on the site relating to utilities and things of that nature, the city actually changed its code in 2023 to allow for slightly smaller lot sizes in our residential areas. And the applicant, you know, essentially withdrew that application, reapplied in 2023 under our more recent codes, and then you get the application before you today. The site, as I said, is located in our neighborhood residential zone. It allows for minimum lot sizes of 4,500 square feet and a minimum density of three units per acre, maximum density of nine units per acre. They comply with that. The overall density on this site would be proposed to be just under five units per acre. I forget exactly what it is, but it's like four and a half, four and three quarters units per acre. As part of any development, what we've reviewed to date, as I stated, with the attachments, we've reviewed detailed traffic information relating to the proposal. We've reviewed preliminary grading plans, geotechnical plans, stormwater, water, sewer. And in a nutshell, we have a lot of conditioning on this project associated with some off-site roadway improvements that are required, some off-site water conveyance improvements required, one of which is a requirement of the city, frankly, because currently the city is deficient in, I guess for lack of better term, fire flow as it relates to the southern end of town. And the city has had a project in the works for about two years now that is looking to go to construction next spring that will insert a large amount of valving and interconnections required so that we can kind of move water around, so to speak, from our other water pressure zones into this one and basically free up the required flow for more connections on the south end of town. So that should be happening by early 2026. And it is a condition, should this plat be approved, that we don't approve any building permits until that project is done because it's a fire code requirement to have that. As far as traffic goes, I mean, certainly this will increase traffic. It goes without saying, we've got several dead-end roadways that lead into this site and the adjacent neighborhoods really haven't seen a whole lot of traffic other than their own subdivision traffic. To kind of summarize the review, there's various levels of traffic service service levels on roadways and intersections that goes A through F. None of the impacted roadways would fall below a level B, which wouldn't warrant any significant improvements to intersections or to roadways less the intersection at Deegan Road and Railroad Avenue, which would require some widening and some minor improvements to better support two-way traffic. That was determined through some additional specific study of that intersection with the State of Washington and Mason County because Deegan Road is located in Mason County. As far as the city's end is concerned, they're of course going to be doing all of their onsite improvements. That's streets, stormwater, water, sewer, sidewalks. Everything will be paid for by the developer. They will also be widening 16th Street based on conditioning, recommended conditioning, I should back up. Widening 16th Street, which is the north-south road that goes between Harvard and Turner Avenue to the north of this site, that would carry roughly 50% of the project traffic, at least in Phase 1, before the connection to Deegan Road is made. They'll be widening that to meet city standard because currently it's a little undersized per city standard. Farther on, I believe with Phase 4, they will be making a connection on 10th Street between Euclid and Wyandotte, which basically would allow for another access point rather than just 7th Street from the east side of the site. That would occur later on with future phases.
Can I interrupt you for a second? Just because I'm not as familiar with your city, I apologize. But the connections that you've just described, so the Satsib Avenue connection at Deegan Road, is that, that is the new road extension that will occur and during which phase?
Phase 2.
Phase 2.
Yeah. Based on the traffic information we received, and it was peer-reviewed by a city hired consultant and our engineering department, we are allowing up to 105 lots be built in Phase 1 with the existing street system, but we wouldn't allow any more until the connection down to Deegan Road is made. Can you see my cursor on screen? Can you see?
I can, that's helpful, yes.
Okay, so yeah, this would, this roadway would go in at Phase 2. And this colored area here is what they're showing currently as Phase 2.
Okay. And so Satsib, yeah, Satsib Avenue, is it going to connect on its easternmost side? What is it connecting to? Is there an existing road that's not marked? I can't.
There is not. This is a platted section of roadway to the south of the Grandview Heights subdivision. What our codes and standards say is they develop it up to the extent of their subdivision, but it would not be passable past this point until the rest of the roadway is developed.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
It does. So will that be a hammerhead turn? What is that end of Satsib going to look like?
It'll meet fire code. That's an excellent question. If it exceeds, I believe, 150 feet, fire code would require a turnaround at that point. Our fire marshal is in the room, he can probably better answer that. But it may not be required since access can be obtained from the north. These houses would not front on Satsib. Does that make sense? They're going to be fronting on the interior lots here?
It does. It does. But I guess I'm less worried about access than about turnaround and the capabilities of fire trucks as I know the fire teams are usually very cognizant of that. So if he, I'll take your word for it unless he has anything to add or clarify from what you said.
Nope, he does not. He's shaking his head.
And I'm sorry, for the record, what is the fire marshal's name?
Keith Reeds.
Keith Reeds. Okay. And then the other point of access that you said would be newly, newly built out for this project on Wyandotte? How did you say that? I'm so sorry.
Wyandotte. That's basically Wyandotte ends right where my cursor is in the Grandview Heights subdivision. And it would continue on through this subdivision, but then also connect to what's called Eaglewood Way at the location I'm on right now.
Okay. Okay. And then also at Eagle View Place as well at the north end?
Yes. Eagle View Place is a very undersized roadway that is part of the recommended conditioning. They would widen that out, install curb, gutter, sidewalk on both sides so that it essentially matches current standard. Back when the Eaglewood subdivision was done, the city didn't seem to pay much attention to these types of stub streets and allowed, basically it's the width of a driveway, you know, in pavement. It just really wouldn't support any real traffic coming from. So they will be improving that to connect to Eaglewood Way as well.
Okay. And then Wyandotte Avenue, because you mentioned the Satsib extension was not built as part of this Grandview development, but the Wyandotte Ave connection is already constructed?
No, they would be completing it. Wyandotte ends at the end of their subdivision, the Grandview Heights subdivision. And Eaglewood similarly ends at the end of the Eaglewood subdivision. So they would be connecting the missing piece, so to speak.
Yeah, sorry, it was an inartful question. I meant what's shown as Wyandotte Ave to the east of this proposal, that is constructed, whereas.
Correct, yes. I'm sorry, I misunderstood, yes.
No, it was not well asked, so I appreciate the clarification. What is this green, well, I won't, I won't stop your flow of your presentation if you were going to move through the remaining phases. I just have a lot of questions about the road construction issue. So I'll pause there and let you proceed. I believe you were at Phase 2.
Yeah, well, essentially, all these color coatings in here show the proposed phasing at this point. And the applicant developed this phasing in part in discussion with our team, including our fire marshal, to make sure that as we build out specific phases, they're complying with things like fire codes. I mean, that was a great segue, I suppose. What they're indicating here, this would be a temporary cul-de-sac at the end of this street to allow for fire trucks to turn around. And at the end of, these are unnamed streets at this point, but at the end of this street, they would actually have a temporary roadway that would cut across the north side of their pond to act as a turnaround for fire trucks, for utility vehicles, you know, so they can just basically do a loop of the site if they come in. Because these road lengths exceed fire code standards. You don't want to be backing a fire truck or a garbage truck or a, you know, UPS vehicle, what have you, several hundred feet essentially.
I don't know if I'm seeing what you're seeing on the map as far as that circle. Where is that delineated? Because I see lots. No, I see that, I see that one. I'm mostly talking about the end of Phase 1 as it relates to like Ridge Loop. So they're going to construct down past Track J. And then it's going to.
It's right here where my cursor is, the north side of the pond. There'd be a temporary roadway put in what's called Track K until Phase 2 goes in. Then you would make the whole roadway connection around the loop here.
Okay. I guess I'm not seeing that on the map, the temporary roadway. And maybe I'm just not seeing it.
Oh, it's actually written in this note above, I'm being told by the applicant. So this explains the concept for fire turnarounds with Phase 1?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on, I must be on a different map. Mine doesn't have that note. I'm on the non-colored version of this map.
Okay, yeah, there's, that's why I chose this one specifically. I mean, there's separate grading plans, there's landscaping plans, there's the subdivision maps. And they all show the same thing, but with different layers on it essentially. This one is.
Which one are, which one are you looking at? Because when I click on, when I open the preliminary plat map, it does not have that note.
It's on the last page of the preliminary plat map. If you scroll down, the very last page has the phasing map.
There it is, thank you so much. Okay, let me look at that comment. That's the temporary cul-de-sac. Oh, and then, okay, and then there's the note on Track K. Track K, temporary road connection between Ridge Loop and G Street. Will that, will there be a fire access gate or will that be open to the public?
Unclear at this point. But based on conditioning of the plat, I mean, we don't vet out those finer details at this point typically, but we have the right or all-encompassing conditions that generally state they're going to comply with city standards, city code. So as we dive in and they engineer further, because these aren't construction drawings at this point by any means, as they engineer further, they're. as they engineer further their their improvement plans, those things start getting vetted out for specifically how it's going to be signed, how it would be paved, you know, all these things. But generally speaking, that's what's going to occur, if if that makes sense.
It does, and and I'm very cognizant of that. I just, these aspects of this phasing plan, there's there's a number of questions I have about the phasing plan, just given that a lot of fundamental aspects are being sort of pushed into the later phases that I I have questions for you and for the applicant about. So I I appreciate that a lot of those finer details are going to be dealt with later. But I want to make sure that I am reviewing the proposal with the totality of circumstances in place. So that's why I asked the question.
Understood. Those are those are great questions.
All right, keep going.
Okay, as far as water goes, I I won't I won't bore you with the details, but essentially, the the city's updated their water comprehensive plan recently. And these these guys were caught in between, so to speak. When they first applied, we were in the process of updating it. And then by the time we got farther along, we had completed it. We understood some of the nuances of our water system much better. And we ended up issuing a couple of memos. The most recent reissued memo was from June 13, 2025. And that's referenced in the conditions. The the only reason I bring that up is, rather than go through the myriad of water conditions that are on the, you know, we're recommending being imposed on the plat, we're just recommending that the development comply with that memo. And it's it's a multi-page memo, very technical. The applicants reviewed it, they concur. But yeah, I I felt that was just a much more clean way of getting through the water concerns on the site. Sewer, I already stated, is pretty straightforward. They're going to be installing a brand-new sewer main that will gravity-feed everything off this site. That is something our Public Works Department really pushed for because they didn't want to have to manage any pump stations, you know, if we don't have to. Because those the city then has to manage and maintain in perpetuity. And gravity sewer is much easier to maintain than pump stations, force mains, those sorts of things. As far as schools is concerned, this this is an interesting aspect of the the project. Remember, when I stated they had a subdivision applied for in 2006? At that time, the developer entered into a mitigation agreement with Shelton School District. We and that is recorded, it's a recorded agreement for school impact fees for new houses built on the site. We contacted Shelton School District as we were reviewing this, and they are standing by that agreement. So that agreement would be in effect and applied to this subdivision should they build up. Similarly, with with parks, our code does require that parks be provided within the plat. This is a requirement in part because when the council decided to reduce lot sizes, one of the concerns was, well, if we reduce lot sizes, people have less room to recreate, to put up their, you know, seasonal pool or have a, you know, places for the kids or the dogs to run around. So our our code requires that parks be provided. These would be privately owned and maintained parks within the plat. And they've shown those in various locations throughout the site. The some of the improvements would include a small play area, you know, with with activity center, whatever you want to call it, jungle gym, I mean, I don't know what they're called now, kids' play area. There would be several grass areas for, you know, dogs or people to have lunch or what have you. They're they're proposing trails that kind of crisscross through the site that not only act to reduce pedestrian travel times rather than have to walk the circuitous route around blocks. We have a lot of mid-block crossings that are proposed that would cut through the middle of several of the blocks you see there to allow for easier pedestrian access. We are recommending a condition, though, because it's it's unclear if they fully comply with the what we call the active use play area requirement. It it's likely they do, but it's not certain because we don't have fully vetted out grading plans yet. Once we get those, we just have a condition saying we need to have the minimum two acres of active use play area on the site. And they're very close. And as I alluded to in the staff report, that may all just be worked out in the final grading plans. But we do have a condition that would allow for some slight modification to the plat to accommodate additional parkland if required. So that might mean shuffling a couple of lots or, in an extreme situation, removing a lot or two to provide for more park space. And we just wanted that to be specifically in in the recommendation.
Let me ask a question on that real quick.
Okay.
So given that this is a phased project, it may take a number of years. If the city were to update, since we're not, we don't have plans associated with that aspect of the plat as well as storm and other things. If if the city changes its regulations, is the intent for the preliminary, the the but excuse me, the regulations as they exist at the time the preliminary plat is approved to apply to those requirements? Or is the expectation that the requirements in place at the time the submittal occurs will be binding? So, for example, let's say the city increases the required play area in the next 10 years and phase three isn't until after that time?
State vesting law would say they are vested under the current regulations. Now, if if the plat expires, if it gets approved and the plat expires, let's say they they do phase one and phase two, three, four, what what have you, doesn't occur, and the plat then expires pursuant to state law, they they could reapply for it, but then current regulations would apply. But yeah, as it stands currently, these these regulations cited in the staff report would apply as long as the plat has a legal life, so to speak, should it be approved.
Okay, thank you for confirming.
I I guess, you know, I've spoken honestly way longer than I assumed I would. I apologize for that. I would just like to close it out by generally saying we are recommending approval of the subdivision, but it's with a, you know, several pages of conditions on pages 10 through 14. And they they relate to all aspects of the project, from utilities to roadways to parks to critical areas. And I would leave it at that. And I I welcome your questions, which sounds like you have a few. I I may be asking some of my cohorts to come up and help answer them, though.
And actually, I think a lot of them are for the applicant, so I I can hold off. But I did have a question on the school impact fee agreement. Is a copy of that agreement in the record? I see the auditor's file number, or assume that's the reporting file number for that document.
It is, yes. I did not include a physical copy of it. I apologize for that now that I'm reflecting on that. I probably should have. I can certainly forward that to you if you'd like. They're they're available online on the auditor's website under that number. Would you like me to send that to you?
Yeah, that would be great. And so I will admit that document preemptively as exhibit 19.
I apologize for that.
Not a problem. That's an agreement between the the applicant and the school district or a preceding owner of the property?
It it was, I believe it was a preceding owner, but it ran with the land. It was very specific. When we inquired to them about it, they said it the way it's worded, it stands and it runs with the land and it's levy per lot.
When you say you inquired with them, are you referring to the school district or the applicant?
Oh, the the school district.
Okay. Just looking back through my notes. I noted that there were a couple of deviations from the city's design standards that were not not positing as a variance, but there was, you would you discussed them in your staff report. Can you speak to those? Maybe it was just the the driveways.
Yes. So, yeah, thank you. There there's actually three, I think, total, one of which addresses the Satsib Avenue Access Road. It's what's called a, I'm forgetting the term. It's basically an exception to our design and construction standards, given the grades along that western slope. There there's going to be a very small portion of Satsib that will just be over 10% grade, which our city standards limit inherently street grades to 8% or less. And given the topography, given the limitations on the site, our engineering department allowed for an exception to that, although the sections that are over the requisite grade are to be paved in concrete. And that's just due to, you know, in the winter, we get we get snow, we get ice. Concrete provides a better table for traction as we go through and plow and sand and what have you. The other ones I believe you're referencing, they speak to driveway aprons along the street. Given the narrow nature of some of the lots, we wanted to have shared drive. And when I say apron, I'm only referring to the curb cut, essentially, at the street, how people access their driveways. We we'd like to combine driveway accesses for adjacent lots as as much as possible just to maximize the amount of on-street parking that'll be available rather than have, you know, driveway curb cuts all along the roadway. And that was one of the conditions I amended the staff report for after conferring with the applicant. They brought up some, you know, logistical concerns with the way I originally had it worded. So we we changed the wording to that, and I think it achieves the same end. The the last one speaks to kind of a gap between our public work standards and our zoning standards currently. So as I said, we we updated our zoning standards in 2023. In 2024, the Public Works Department came out with this new, or actually, I think it was in 2023, slightly after we did our zoning changes. They changed the cross-section in our roadway standards, which pushes the sidewalk up against property lines. And we inherently require a 15-foot setback for garages. Well, that poses some issues when you have a public sidewalk 15 feet away from a driveway because the average American car is pushing 15 feet. Larger trucks are 16, 17, 18, 19 feet. So what we're recommending is that in this plat, garages from the, you know, from the front property line to the face of garage, there'd be a minimum 20-foot setback just to more reasonably accommodate the hope of parking in one's driveway without blocking a public sidewalk.
Okay, I appreciate that clarification. Other than that, there's no deviations, the rest of the proposal meets city standards?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Can you, I know you touched on this, the off-site road improvements that are going to actually occur within the county? I I noted in the mitigation proposed, you were asking for a an additional traffic calming study? And I I wasn't sure if that was as it relates to a road in the county?
No.
Can you speak to that condition?
Thank you for bringing that up. I I didn't mention that, and I apologize. No, this relates to an existing troublesome spot, I guess I'll call it, in the city's roadway network. And it occurs on 7th Street in between Harvard Avenue and, I'm going to get the name of the road wrong. Is it Grant?
Yeah.
There there's a rise in that location. And we've, the city's been targeting that for some amendments to increase visibility. Now, certainly, the the project would put additional traffic through there as as cited in the traffic report. So we had recommended a condition that would require they contribute a sum to that effort to look at that intersection and figure out some improvements that'll effectively increase safety at the intersection. Because you end up with a situation where people heading north on Harvard onto 7th Street sometimes almost get hit because the lack of visibility at this rise. There's a real quick rise and drop in the roadway at that location. So we're looking to study that and make that better, frankly.
Okay, appreciate that. I think that might be all my questions. I think we, well, I have more for the applicant, I think, at this point. But we can transition to hear from the applicant next, unless there's anything else that you wanted to note at this time?
I I do not.
Okay. All right, and who from the applicant is present that would like to speak?
Graham Middleton, a Larson Associate, some project engineer.
Right, Mr. Middleton? Can you raise your right hand before you testify? Sorry, your your window is very small, so I can't see you. Do you swear and affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth in this proceeding today?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, sorry to interrupt, but I'll stop sharing. I apologize for that. That's why your window is so small.
Not a problem. And I can recall that if it's helpful. So, all right, Mr. Middleton, go ahead and proceed.
Hey, hi. So I'm the project engineer for Coffee Creek, and I'm also the president of Larson Associates, professional land surveyors and engineers and planners. We have been working on this project for quite some time. And we've done a, we've put a lot of effort and thoughtfulness into preparing the plans for this project and the preliminary plat and want to thank Jason for his detailed staff report. And appreciate all the city staff as well as working through this. As you can see from the record, there's a lot of history on how we got to this point. There's, there's, there've been two of the basic utilities to serve this project, sewer and water. We have a very expensive expensive process through the engineering and construction part of this to get phase one and get the project started. And it starts with a 5,400-foot offsite gravity sewer extension and then also some water improvements to improve on the city's pressure zones for the water system for the project. But anyways, you'll see a lot of that in the records. And so knowing that the entire project file is before you here today, I don't want to repeat all the various details that Jason has kind of already discussed, but I just touch on some of the decision-making processes that we typically go over in the hearing process. So the city of Shelton staff reviewed the preliminary plat application and documentation for completeness based on the subdivision submission requirements identified in section 19.16.040. Our application was deemed complete by staff on May 11 of 2023, which is the date staff vested the application for processing. City staff issued all the required notices soliciting comments from our neighbors, the public, city departments, and all other applicable local, state, and federal agencies. In order to affirm the project will not have an unacceptable adverse effect on the quality of the environment the applicant has provided the necessary environmental studies and reports, and city staff has reviewed the relevant materials in order to determine any necessary mitigation. On July 17, 2025, staff issued an MDNS, mitigation determination of nonsignificance, under the State Environmental Policy Act, which includes included 11 mitigation measures for the project. The last procedural step in the decision-making process is the public hearing, which is being conducted here today. Finally, pursuant to the Shelton Municipal Code Title 19, Chapter 19.16.060, subdivisions shall be given preliminary approval upon the hearing examiners finding the approval criteria have been satisfied under subsection F, which you mentioned first off on the start of hearing. I won't go through that. So broadly speaking, we believe the subdivision conforms to all the applicable city of Shelton adopted codes, ordinances, standards, policies, or plans, and that adequate provisions have been made for utilities and other public services necessary to serve the needs of the proposed subdivision. As such, we believe Coffee Creek preliminary plat fully meets the subdivision criteria of approval in Shelton's Municipal Code Title 19, Chapter 19.16, preliminary plat. And together with Title 20, Chapter 20.08 C for a residential development located in that neighborhood residential zoning district, NR. As such, on behalf of the owners, we respectfully ask the hearing examiner find that adequate provisions have been made for the public's health, safety, and general welfare, and that approval of the Coffee Creek subdivision will serve the public's use and interest. I would also like to point out that Paul Lindberghs with LGI Homes is here as well, representing the developer and the builder. And then Robert Turhune is Coffee Creek LLC. Paul may be, maybe coming up to add some clarity, do a few things later on, depending on the questions that you have. As far as a couple of points that you brought up, that you had some concerns with, I just wanted to point out a couple of things with, for example, Phase One, when Phase One gets constructed, we will be making essentially three public road connections to three existing roads. One is Wyandotte Avenue, which you noticed is on the east side. One is Eaglewood Way will be connecting those roads. And the other location is Eagleview Place, which is on the north side of the project. When those, when Phase One comes in and makes these connections, these are all existing roads that currently dead-end. And these will be providing connectivity for this neighborhood and the needed circulation and desired circulation for emergency vehicle access in this area. As far as Phase One goes and the location of it, we needed that number of lots in order to help support the offsite infrastructure that's required to get this project going. It's a tremendous cost to grade Satsip Avenue and get the utilities down to Deegan Road. And then from Deegan Road to the railroad avenue sewer connection, again, a 5,400-foot-long sewer extension. And it's a gravity line. We have a bridge crossing. We have to hang the utilities from the bridge. So it's rather complicated to get there and expensive. So as far as the phasing goes, also just to note that the phase configuration has changed a little bit. There was a lot of thought that has gone into it from the marketing aspect to where it makes the most sense and what improvements need to be built into it to make this first phase work. And then be set up good for the next phases coming in in the future. So in doing so, we've also done and completed conceptual utility plans for the whole site and conceptual rating plans. And we worked with staff through the entire process to, as a team, to develop what we have from you today. For that, I'll stand for any questions?
Great, thank you, Mr. Middleton. The name of the other gentleman, I got Robert Turhune down. It was Paul, what's the last name?
Lindberghs.
Can you spell that, please?
L Y M B E R I S.
And he is with whom?
LGI Homes.
LGI, okay. All right, thank you. I think one of my questions relates to the proposal associated with tracks J and track O, which are flagged on the preliminary plat both as stormwater and open space recreation. Can you talk to me a bit about that? That dual functionality, given that the stormwater infrastructure is not, is not, there's no stormwater plan associated with the proposal unless I missed it?
Well, both tracked J and track O will have stormwater ponds. Designed them, track J, stormwater pond will be built as part of Phase One and will be able to handle the stormwater runoff for the development of Phase One. And, and track O will be developed as part of Phase Two. And that'll handle the stormwater from the remaining portions of the project.
So the stormwater pond within track O will be designed to handle stormwater for all remaining phases?
So, correct, so tracked, the pond in track J will be designed for Phase One and the improvements for Phase One. So all the area highlighted in blue, I believe on the basel map, will be able to be taken care of with the pond in track J. And then in track O, which is going to be Phase Two, that's the pond in Phase Two. That's where that will be built, and that'll handle the stormwater from the remaining, for the remaining phases.
Okay, and this may be a question for Mr. Doss, but the functionality of those tracks as it relates to the parks and the open space requirements, it's unclear to me that they can serve that dual purpose sufficiently to meet the city's requirements. I just want to confirm, since the storm pond will assume the majority of those lots, of those tracks?
They weren't considered as part of the parkland, park plan. What I'd refer you to is the, and it is difficult to discern, especially from the phasing map. I wouldn't use that to figure out the parkland. Look at Attachment Six, or no, I'm sorry, Attachment Five goes through the landscaping and amenity map. That includes graphics on what we're looking at as quote-unquote parkland on the site. The stormwater ponds are not included in that calculation.
Okay, my confusion, they were included in this, they were referenced in the staff report as the primary source of open space, so my mistake. Maybe I misread that. It might have just been.
I don't think you did, actually, now that I think about the way it's written. I see how you could confuse that. That wasn't the intent, that, that was an error on my part.
Not a problem. I see the landscaping plan, that distinction is important and very helpful. Okay. Okay, then. Sorry, let me open. Okay, staff report. Just a couple of questions, Mr. Middleton, about some of the things that Mr. Doss spoke to. So the, as a condition of the proposal, off-site traffic mitigation work will be required. Mr. Doss represented that all of the conditions have been discussed with the applicant. Can you respond to that piece as it relates to off-site traffic mitigation?
Yes, we actually have our Phase One engineering, final engineering plans almost ready to submit to the city. And we built into that the off-site improvements that are required and worked with the traffic engineers and also been in direct communication with staff through the design process. So we, we believe we have all those details ironed out. And as far as the level of detail you'd like me to discuss, I can go into some really good detail if you'd like me to.
I think I understand it. It was more of a cross-referencing the representation from Mr. Doss. So I'm sure we'll get questions about traffic, and you can speak to that in response to any, any specific questions. But the plans all look, look consistent for me. Same question as it relates to that school impact fee agreement? Any comment?
Yeah, so my, our understanding is really there's, there's no set in code school impact fees that are required. And we knew coming into this project that there was already an agreement with the school district. And so we reached out to the school district and they concurred that it would still be applicable for our project. Because it's on a, it's on a per-lot basis of what the mitigation needs to be.
Okay.
So kind of the onus is put on us to go work it out with the school district. And fortunately, it was already worked out essentially.
Okay, okay, but those fees will be collected by the city and then remitted to the district, correct? Yeah.
They'll pay those directly. I'd just like to clarify, this is Jason Doss. No, they do not pay them to the city. They pay them directly to the school district. And we look for that before we final homes. We make sure that those fees are paid. That's part of our checklist. So if a house is being built, there are certain fees that need to be paid upfront. We make them aware they have a mitigation agreement. We need to see proof it's paid before we will allow occupancy of that home.
Okay, that's helpful. Um. Okay. Uh, water extensions, sewer extensions, no, nothing to add on those. Mr. Middleton, all of the commitments that were represented to, that were spoken to by Mr. Doss. No edits, no comments from you?
No, in fact, you know, one, one thing that we sometimes end our presentation with is that we've reviewed the conditions of approval proposed by staff, and we find them to be acceptable. I went through those again with Mr. Lindberghs for the hearing, and we agree that they're acceptable to our team.
Okay. Okay, well, I think that's it. Let's go ahead and hear from members of the public. And then, Mr. Middleton, your team will be invited to respond to any questions after the public comment period has ended. And, Mr. Doss, you as well, but we will want to end with the applicant just from a procedural standpoint. So thank you, Mr. Middleton.
Thank you.
All right, for the public comment portion of the hearing, I know we are already at an hour, I believe. We have a list, is that correct, Mr. Doss?
I believe so. Did everyone who wants to speak sign in? The list, if that's all right. Hey, and look at that, first on the list is me, but I've already spoken.
Okay.
Okay, Michael. I'm gonna destroy that last name.
Molseth.
There you go. I couldn't read it. Michael Molseth.
That's my excuse too.
And, Mr. Doss, if you can give me a copy of that list, I won't have to force people to spell their names. I'll just put Michael in my notes. Okay, thank you so much. Could you please raise your right hand? Thank you. Do you swear from the testimony you're going to provide here today, it will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna, given that the time is running short, and I recognize that's primarily because of my questions. Pursuant to the typical standard for this type of a hearing, I'm going to provide you with three minutes for public comment. And when that three minutes concludes, I will give you a flag and then ask you to wrap up, but I won't cut you off at three minutes. So just be cognizant of that. All right, thank you so much. Go ahead and proceed.
And my name is Michael Molseth. I live in the Grandview track. I'm retired up there, but before I was retired, I spent three, seven years in fire in EMS in Southern California in a very large county fire district. I have three concerns. Number one is fire flow. Mr. Doss has stated that they're woefully underwatered in our area. We have one water tank on Harvard that covers not only Grandview, but the whole area around it. So our pressures sometimes do flush away. He stated that they are putting in systems to correct that with valves and such. But the concern I have with that is it's bringing it up to a standard that's still not, I don't think where it should be as far as fire flow goes. They should always be concerned about the worst-case scenario, and that should be requiring another tank in the area, just not valves. And he's also stated five to 10 years to bring the water flow back up to where it should be in that timeframe along with the tracks being built. But it still doesn't catch us up to where we need to be right now, especially with when our houses going in on Phase One. So number two and three are kind of joined together. It's the street issue. Phase One going up to Wyandotte into the first phase, that's the only access they have from down there until they connect from Wyandotte and the two Eagle Streets. Wyandotte itself from Seventh Street up is three-quarters, an older street. It's a smaller residential street, no curves, no sidewalks, until you get into the Grandview track. And then basically what happens, you have curbs and sidewalks, but we also have swales on each side of the street, which reduce the street size down dramatically. Now, we already have problems in that area trying to get buses through and engines through because people park on the streets. And yes, there's no parking signs, and the city is responsible for taking and removing. But the city, again, is also very busy with their police department, so it rarely does happen. So that's a huge concern for us, just because that's going to be the only way in and out for all construction, all anywhere from 100 to 300 more cars with the first track going in, including, you know, buses and engines. He stated there's a turnaround up there, but I don't know if we've ever had a huge fire up here before, but there's more than one engine responds to that. And when engines get crammed up, it's a problem, so especially with people trying to get out. So the other is water flow as far as rainwater goes. Now, granted, if you go up Wyandotte, it's going to peak above our houses and drop down going the other way. So water flows into that way, but you come on to the other streets like Grandview, what they're going to bump into in another phase, water is flowing down into our area, and again, we got the swales. So, and also means there's traffic coming through there with the swales as far as vehicles go. I'm concerned that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We're at three minutes. If you want to wrap up, that'd be great.
My concern is basically traffic control, water flow, streets being too narrow, and fire access, or I should say more of a water system access. Okay.
Okay, thank you so much.
Hey, the next person listed is actually with the applicant's team. Do we want to just, it's Robert Turhune. He's one of the developers.
Yeah, let's hold off. Yeah, he'll have the opportunity to speak again in rebuttal. And I just wanted to flag Mr. Molseth. I know you had notes, to the extent you have notes or any materials or anyone in the public does that you'd like to submit, please feel free to provide those, since I know we are limiting the time of your comments. Those materials can be submitted as part of the record as well, if you'd like. No pressure if you don't want to.
Jacob Ray?
No comment.
No filling. Next is Tracy Dunn. If that's all right. Oh, excellent.
All right, please raise your right hand. Do you swear and affirm that the testimony you will provide today will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead and please proceed.
My concern was with the Coffee Creek secret checklist. And there were some items that I noticed going through that that weren't included or recognized. And starting on page six of that list, item four, which was plants, one of the things that is very pervasive in the area is Scotch fruit. And it was not listed, and it should also be listed as an invasive species under item E of that same thing. On item five for animals, they've listed some animals, but for those of us that live in the area, we have seen hawks, falcons, eagles, owls, crows, and coyotes, and none of which are listed in there. On item seven, under environmental health, in item D, noise. Number three mentions, there's no mention of the short-term noise created by the logging or land clearing operations and how that would affect people. Item 12 for recreation, under B, this is both a good and a bad thing. The project will displace near, nearly daily recreational walking, motorcycle, and ATV activity. And on number, our item 14, subsection D, there is, it's talking about. And on number, our item 14, subsection D, uh, there is, it's talking about specific off-site improvements to existing roads. Those should be known. Uh, and are these costs going to be assumed by the tax or the city, meaning us, the taxpayers? Because of, there's a traffic fee program mentioned with a per square foot unit. And is that per house? At 3,000, okay. So the person with the full build out, that's almost like 1.4 million dollars. So, uh, and item 15, public services. That was my question is what was the existing school mitigation plan? And what are those costs? Because we know that our schools are overtaxed already, and we are, are paying for that as well. And last, um, item 16 was just a question about utilities. Is whether fiber optic cable would be going into that neighborhood? If so, why, uh, we're, the question is that it would be made available in the Eaglewood and Greenwood neighborhood, neighborhoods as well, because fiber stops harder currently.
All right, that is your three minutes. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. And Mr. Dos, before you jump to the next person, just to confirm, um, there were no appeals of the SEPA mitigation of, mitigated determination of non-SEPA, yes, the MDS.
Yeah, we met with several stakeholders, but yeah, nothing came out of it once we walked through concerns.
Okay. We can proceed with public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, you waited on me. Mary Johnson.
No, I didn't. I said no.
Okay. Tim. Kurt Singer.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. And now you're waiting on me. I was, I was doing my notes from the last speaker, apologies. Uh, do you swear, do you swear and affirm to tell the truth, nothing but the truth in this proceeding?
I do.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Briefly, I, I came to Shelton 20 years ago. I retired from the military, got 2007, bought my house 2005 here, and went to work out to prison. I've been here for 20 years. I love living in Shelton, and the quality of life is why I'm here. And, uh, I'm just going to basically reflect on a couple of things real quick. The roadways and Wyandotte, I'm the last house on Wyand, second to the last house on Wyandotte Avenue where it dead ends going into the new subdivision. And, uh, as far as a lot of people's quality of life goes, I know that's secondary when it comes to a large project like this, but that, cutting all those trees and all that down and for the animals, it's going to be a big quality of life issue since we only have, you know, access to the one parked down below, which is Neyland. But my, uh, my big issue is, again, the streets. We have the swells on Wyandotte Avenue, and that cuts the, uh, street size down significantly. We have no parking. And my recommendation is that we do the improvements to the streets, and let's get the basics done before we start building this project. Wyandotte Avenue is not set up to be a major access point, especially during the construction phase of this project. I've been in construction also, and there's a lot of things that were done in my subdivision that, you know, I understood when I bought the house, that should not be allowed to go on anymore, and it's a minimum standard. The approach aprons to, uh, two-car garages and driveways in my subdivision is actually what we call a single car approachway for a two-car driveway and two-car garages. So if those things are going to take place for their quality of issue, I recommend that we do not use as minimum standards. I recommend that we, um, take a look at that because I have to drive over curbed the back straight into my driveway now, and if that's going to happen for the residents down below. And I view, I honestly believe that there are too many houses and, and too many, uh, there's going to be too many lots for recreation. It's cutting all those trees down. It's going to create a lot of wind issues and weather issues for our neighborhoods and our quality of life, and also the noise that goes along with that. But, uh, just to significantly take a look at the word minimum, we're going to put some lots in there that are minimum. I think what we should, should actually do is take quality of life into effect now, and I recommend we disapprove this project until we go a little further in depth as far as access, like Mike was talking about for fire and EMS, and get those issues worked out before we allow construction. Because if you're going to use Wyandotte, which they will be the primary access for their construction in phase one, that's not nearly big enough to handle all the major equipment and everything they're going to bring in there. It's going to be a, not only a quality of life issue, but I view it as a safety issue too with, again, people are going to park, and I'm guilty occasionally if I have somebody come over, they'll park right there at the end of the street on either side. And that's a problem because there is, it is marked, no parking, and we roll the dice, but we have to do what we have to do sometimes. And let's get away from that minimal standard. And whoever puts your signs up for public notices probably should take these signs, put them where people would actually see them, rather than at the end of the dead-end roads where I found the one that everybody read to, to, to know about this meeting for future reference. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dos, just to confirm, was notice placed in the, the statutorily required location?
It was, yeah.
Okay.
But I understand what you're saying. Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Road ends, tried to make them as visible as possible.
Absolutely.
Um, Ardell Razor.
Oh. All right, thank you. Do you swear and affirm that the testimony you will offer today will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay, um, there's a couple of people that have already spoken that I agree all their points, so I won't talk very long about it. And that was Michael, the first speaker, and Tim, who just spoke. I'm also a Grandview Heights resident, and, um, my issue has to be, yes, the fire codes because our streets are very narrow with the swell and then the sidewalks on the other side, and then our two-car garage or driveways. And so a lot of these people, they're, they're ignoring all the no parking signs right on the street because they have more than two or three, four cars, and that's their right, but it says no parking. So now when you've got wide vehicles like a fire truck, or a bus, or a garbage truck, you cannot, there's no two-way flow there now. So you have to wait or let them go around. And I live way at the top of Grand Heights, and I see the issue with the safety issues because the streets are too small. And so with the construction going on and going, how's that all going to work? And then there's no outlets, there's three or four no outlets, that those are going to open up, I understand, to get, uh, access through the new, uh, uh, you know, development? And how is that all going to work when our streets are so narrow? Are you going to get rid of the swells and do wider streets to have a safe two-way traffic flow? That's my issue. And, uh, and the first responders issues, if we have a catastrophe or in need of, uh, first responders to be up there, um, that's a big concern with, their streets are not wide now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Sally McColloch. No comment. Terry?
Also no.
Terry Swartos, okay, no comment. Daryl Reamer.
I didn't have any comments.
Okay. And Eleanor Lindquist.
No.
David Constant. Okay. And David did provide comment on the SEPA document. His written comments are included.
Page 27.
Yep, there you go.
All right. Do you swear and affirm that the testimony you will offer today will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, go, please proceed.
As Jason noted, uh, we have, uh, the comments submitted by my wife, who's online, and myself, we submitted during the last request for comment. So rather than rehash it, I'll just publicly say, I'll count it 25 first. I use, uh, I just say that sometimes there's, there's an inaccurate count perhaps on the animals, and I just wanted to substantiate his claim. Other than that, uh, the issues with fire access and something that nobody's brought up yet is your 911 center, your communication center. How many more truck lanes are going to put in? You're going to increase the population of the city by 10% when this is done. Where, where is that 10% of the city going to come from to provide those services? I see the fire chiefs here. What does police say about this? I haven't heard anything from PD. I'm sorry, this, uh... We hear about environmental impact reports. We're part of the environment. Nobody stopped us. Sorry, I'm getting angry. My three minutes is up. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And same, again, just a reminder, if there are any written comments you'd like to submit, this hearing, at the conclusion of this hearing, I will close the record. So now is your time. If you've got any notes or any materials you'd like to submit to Mr. Dos, now is the time.
They can submit it after the hearing too, correct? Right? Like before everybody leaves, if they've got comments in their hands that, you know, yeah.
Right, yes, absolutely. Um, is there anyone else on the list, or are we at the end of the list?
We've got a couple more.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Joanne Metuich.
Okay. Do you swear and affirm that the testimony you will offer today will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you. Go ahead and proceed.
I'm a teacher by nature, so I'm going to do it this way. It's weird. Back to you guys. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Um, I have several concerns regarding the project. While housing is necessary and a necessity, it's also maintaining a public green space where the children and adults can walk through nature, as you guys know. Much of this 97 acres has trails that people have used for generations. My concern is how much of that green space will be remaining after this grid of housing is concrete and asphalted into the area. When reviewing the plan, it appears that the proposed traffic patterns will result in significantly increased congestion on Wyandotte where I live also. Um, an additional concern is, once the houses are built, what employment opportunities are currently available in town to support this level of residency? Are there plans in place for developing businesses in downtown Shelton? Because I don't know if you've been around, but there's more and more empty buildings than filled ones. Between 2000 and 2020, I'll give you some numbers here, Mason County lost 6,000 acres of forest land to, due to development. Much of this occurred in around Shelton, where rural parcels are increasingly converted into subdivisions. This loss fragments wildlife corridors, reduces tree canopy, and increases stormwater runoff, contributing to elevated pollution levels in Oakland Bay, a critical selfish habitat. Shelton's infrastructure is also under pressure. According to the city planning documents, road maintenance costs have risen, have risen 18% in five years, largely due to the traffic of new developments. Emergency response times in outline areas have increased by up to three minutes, and that's a serious concern for public safety. And despite the surge of construction, housing affordability remains elusive. From 2019 to 2023, Shelton's median home price rose nearly 40%, pricing out many longtime residents. The Washington State Department of Commerce notes that the rural development of often fails to meet affordable housing goals instead of attracting speculative investments in short-term rentals. Let's be clear, this is not sustainable growth. It is sprawl. It robs our environment, strains our services, and undermines the rural character that, that binds Shelton. I urge this council to adopt a stronger protections for the green spaces, prioritize infrastructure before expansion, and ensure that any future development aligns with the values and needs of the community, not just market demand. I live, and I bought a house here a year ago, and I live on Wyandotte, and I came here for the green spaces and for the sense of community and for the trails that it provides. If this project continues as currently proposed, this development will undoubtedly disrupt and end our cohesive communities of Wyandotte, Vista Goo Court, and other certain neighborhoods, and construction will continue for years, causing all that we cherish today to be lost forever. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll give you five of these.
Okay. And I'll make any materials submitted during the hearing in public comment as exhibit 20.
Okay. Um, Pat Ammons.
No.
No. Um, Pamela Schellenberger.
No comment.
And no comment. That, that's the last of our list here. Was there anyone else that wanted to speak? I got one more gentleman. Did you, did you want to speak to me, Exandu?
Let's change the vernacular.
All right. Can you, or do you swear and affirm that the testimony you offer today will be truthful?
I do.
All right. Can you state your name for the record?
My name is Julie Cote. I'm also on the record. Um, I'm going to go ahead and echo some of the things my neighbors have said concerning the issue with Wyandotte Avenue. After Wyandotte enters into, um, our neighborhood, it narrows. It's a 20-foot road, a 25-foot. I'm challenging, and I challenge you, Mr., to go down into the Grandview Heights area on garbage day, when everybody has their cans out on the street. When the school bus comes your way, somebody's heading next. Those roads in there are not wide enough. Second point, I have a background in civil engineering and looking at preliminary plans. I can tell you rule number one in civil engineering is that water does not flow uphill. The water from this development will flow down into the Grandview Heights areas. We do not have stengel catch basins. We have what some residents refer to as a moat. It circles the entire area. Again, I challenge you to go see for yourself. Water from this development will go down into Grandview Heights, and will enter into our moat and enter into what we have as already a water collection system, a rainwater collection system. There is no rainwater collection system designed for the eastern side of this development. Therefore, water has only direction, one direction to go downhill, and that is into our area. You are going to have flooding, believe. Also, um, Grandview Drive goes uphill into the development, and that would be connected during my St. Pierre Phase 3. Grandview Drive is at 260 feet above sea level. The top of the new development is at 290 feet above sea level. That is a 30-foot drop in elevation. We live in Western Washington, folks. It gets icy. You want to go down a 15% grade on an icy road, you're going to end up in somebody's front porch. This is, I understand the final plans for grading and elevation have not been submitted as of yet. I think that's a chance because we need to know what we're going to be looking at instead of what we could be looking at. Again, I echo some of the things my neighbors have said concerning street access. Again, I echo some of the things my neighbors have said concerning street access. Wyandotte at that end is an S curve. You're going to be taking very heavy equipment up Wyandotte through that S curve, and people park there. Also, I think I read somewhere in your transit report where if Wyandotte is going to be increased with the amount of traffic, that the speed limit on Wyandotte will have to be increased to 30 miles an hour to compensate for that traffic load. Wyandotte Avenue between Seventh Street and our development is a neighborhood full of kids. During the summer, there's a resident there in the center of Wyandotte who put a little sign up saying danger to kids that play. You're going to have to increase the speed limit on a street where children play, and kids ride their bikes, and parents walk their dogs. You need to rethink this. Decker Road, or Decker Avenue, whatever it's called, is going to be the last piece to the puzzle. They're going to be accessing this development from Wyandotte and from Grandview Heights. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
That's all, I believe. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? No one else in the room?
Okay.
Then we have online ones.
Well, yeah, that's what I was saying in the room.
Yeah. All right, we have two participants online. Lori McConaughey and Christopher Edwards. If you could use the raise your hand feature, if you would like to offer a public comment during today's hearing. You're both muted with your screens off. Oh, there we go.
Sorry, I don't see. That's my first time using Teams, so I don't see the little raise your hand. But, oh, here we go.
It's absolutely fine, yeah. Okay, perfect. Your screen is currently off, in the event you wanted us to see anything. So I'm just flagging that for you. Really? Oh, now it's on. There we go. Oh, and now you're gone. Oh, no, she left. Okay. Well, hopefully, we'll give her a few minutes. We'll give her a few minutes to rejoin. Christopher Edwards, if you are interested in testifying, now is your opportunity. Christopher Edwards?
No, I'm okay.
Okay, thank you so much. All right. Oh, here comes Lori.
Here we go.
Are you there, Lori? Not a problem.
I'm here. Can you see me?
I can't see you, but we can hear you, yeah.
Oh, seeing is a very important part. Can you ask my husband, who's Dave Constant, that guy there in the back, what button? It says my video's on.
You're on.
You're on. Oh, so the problem is on my end, Ms. McConaughey. So I apologize. I've been having Teams issues. But you can be seen in the room, so that's important.
Okay. Well, maybe Jason can see it. I'm heading to show you a picture. I was going to go on and on because I'm a DOJ certified crime analyst. I'm a former paramedic. I'm a former system administrator for a police department that handled all the dispatch, the 911 system, and the in-car data terminals. I'm fortunately retired because apparently I'm too stupid to take non-stress jobs. But I wanted to show a picture, and I hope, Charlotte, you'll be able to see it at some point. This is my $70,000 backyard. I live on Vista View Court, the street that backs up to the subdivision. We bought this house because of this view. My neighbors, all the way down the street, bought their homes partly because of what you can see here. We see animals all day. My husband is the peanut man who feeds the squirrels by hand. This... Imagine this, with every one of those trees gone, and an eight-foot fence backed up with three houses, four houses, the way they're laid out, instead of lined up directly, which, by the way, you'll have to deal with all those neighbors when you need to replace the fence. This is the part about no consideration for the people who already are here, the environmental impact. Had there been 30 feet, 50 feet, and you still had this, I could probably live with that. But you know what? If this is here, I hate to say it, we're leaving. And you're going to have a lot of people along this backdrop that will leave because they can't tolerate, number one, the years and years of noise that's going to come from all these trees being cut down, lumberjacks, tractors, everything else that it takes. I appreciate your time. I appreciate being able to have my input and to show you what some of us are going to have to give up. Thank you.
Thank you. And I was able to see your video share. I did some figuring on my side. So the problem was me.
Yay, thank you.
Thanks. All right. Is there anyone else present in the room that would like to offer testimony?
Jason, I'm trying to... Is there another way to make another comment?
We have someone asking to make an additional comment?
We are sticking with that three minutes, but if you have it written down, that could be submitted as a written comment. So you do have additional time to provide that. All right. Anyone else that hasn't spoken yet? Okay. So now is the opportunity for the applicant to provide any answers to questions posed or responses as they so see fit. And Mr. Dose, to the extent there are questions levied at the city that you would like to respond to, I'll... We can go in any order. If the applicant would prefer you go first, we can do that, applicant, or vice versa. No preference. Why don't we have you? Let's have you go first, Mr. Middleton. Okay. Just a reminder, you're still under oath. We don't need to swear you in again.
For the record, this is Grant Middleton, project engineer. And just a couple of things to note here. Satsap Avenue isn't going to be built out in its entirety in Phase One, but it will be built during Phase Two. And during Phase One, though, we have to grade Satsap in order to install the utilities, the sewer lines especially. And so there will be an access, a construction access down where Satsap and Deegan intersect. So there'll be construction equipment and things coming in that way, some of it, not all of it. But the other thing that was brought up, I just wanted to make, or reiterate that Jason mentioned that all of the off-site intersections that were analyzed and off-site traffic with the traffic impact analysis that was done through Coffee Creek identified that, you know, all intersections, off-site intersections within the study area with immediate vicinity of Coffee Creek are at level of service or operating at level of service B or better. I understand the concerns that the neighborhood has, but they are operating at a level of service B or better, which has been reviewed also by city staff, engineering department, and planning department. So the stormwater, there was a stormwater concern or two. We're going to have to meet the city of Shelton's stormwater management requirements, which also incorporates the best management practices of Department of Ecology. So we do understand that stormwater will flow downhill to the ponds, and we expect, we've done some pretty detailed elevations out there. And with the grading that's going to take place for the site, we expect to be able to get all the stormwater from the subdivision into the proposed ponds, as is shown on the preliminary plat. See, I think that the rest of the Satsap, so I believe I'm done.
Anything else you'd like to offer, Mr. Dose?
I mean, to the... I do, but it's, you know, largely it could be conjectured, I think. But what I would say is, I do appreciate the comments we've received today. And everything the public stated, I mean, we understand the concern. For example, you've got, I personally live south of the subject site. I've walked with my own animals and kids across this site to get to property the city owns to the north of this site, to go down to Goldsboro Creek. There are very interconnected trails throughout many of these vacant, and I emphasize privately owned properties that are on the west, southwest side of town. I, you know, I lament the loss of the ability to walk on these trails, but every time we go on these sites, we're arguably trespassing on private property. These are not publicly maintained trails. They're opportunistic, and we've gotten to enjoy them for any number of years. And it's unfortunate to lose them. But as I said before, the reason we have more robust requirements for parks in subdivisions that we didn't have as recently as, I want to say, 2010 or so, is because of these smaller lot sizes. It's what, you know, kind of the market is demanding, and our council saw that to reduce lot sizes, but increase the subdivision parks requirements. I realize that's no consolation for the neighbors at losing, you know, this open space, but that our neighborhoods, you know, and I include myself in this, were recently built within the last 20, 25 years. And they too were exactly similar forested areas that the people that lived adjacent enjoyed before our subdivisions were built. If you look at the way the Growth Management Act, that's kind of the overall umbrella that governs property development in Washington State for communities that operate under that. Honestly, it wants you to build very densely in the cities. And we are the only incorporated city within Mason County. Mason County is a very rural community, has a lot of forest land and open space, much of it privately held by timber companies, to be sure. But we are, in a sense, required to zone our properties appropriately, make utilities available, do the longer range planning to allow for, you know, the roadway connections we're talking about, to have a more cohesive infrastructure, you know, water, sewer, storm drainage, to allow for this development so that hopefully the intent is that the rural areas stay rural. And we are an enclave of urban development and urban allowances surrounded by our rural county. It's, if that makes sense. The... I don't have a better response for the roadway, the unfortunate, I'll say, roadway cross-section that the city allowed in the Grandview Heights development. That was developed in the late 1990s, early 2000s, I believe. It was building out as I moved to the area. And it's got a 24-foot-wide curb-to-curb cross-section, which allows for two-way traffic. But they're absolutely right. If you have a car parked in there, which is in violation of the signage, of the law, as it were, but it's a practical matter. They don't have much parking on their sites. You know, they've got their driveways, and in many cases, the driveways are steep, which offers some challenges to parking in said driveways. We've talked internally, you know, as the applicant said, the roadway operates within our standards, and it is a standard that the city approved. So at the end of the day, I think any fixes in the future, any changes to that street, that's more incumbent on the city than it is on the developer. And, you know, not to throw us under the bus, but maybe that's something we need to discuss moving forward. So hopefully I'm not getting myself into trouble. I've got a lot of these staff members behind me.
Quick question, Mr. Dose. So as I was looking through the materials for more of the open space buffering, there's a Tract M that's referenced as a future park on the preliminary plat map, but then on the landscaping parks plan, it's not listed as a park. So what is the deal with Tract M?
I can explain that. And if you'll entertain me, I would like to share my screen again.
Okay.
So Tract M is on the far north side of the project site. And way up here, it's this, it's straight across from where Wyandotte would head into this property to the north. That property to the north is, why can't I back out of this? It's none of my way made to escape. Let's do this.
I see your map. That's what you're trying to share.
Here's what I'm trying to get to. That property to the north is up here. It's a vacant piece of property recently logged by the previous owner. Now it's got a sizable amount of Scotch broom on it, but it does have a lot of pristine forest land on the western slopes that lead down to Goldsboro Creek, which is up here off the top of the page. That property is owned by the city of Shelton now. And it is, it was negotiated between the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency and the previous owner, who is a, you know, a logging company, essentially. They had some challenges at one of their facilities over in Tacoma. And as part of the negotiated settlement, they were deeding some properties for conservation purposes. So I don't know if this holds any water with the residents in the neighborhood. This property is held by the city. It's largely targeted for conservation purposes, meaning it won't be developed. Some of the riders on the property, in fact, greatly limit our ability to develop it. I believe, if memory serves, we can quote-unquote "develop" a maximum of three acres on the site, and it's held in our Parks Department. We are currently, you know, they're going to be talking about what might occur on that site. It's probably going to be more what you'd consider passive use recreation, like it's used for now. There's a lot of opportunistic trails that are non-maintained, but they've been used for decades, you know, across that site. And the long-term plan of the city is to optimize use of that site. So yes, while you're absolutely right, a majority of this site would be taken up by lots and roads and what have you. This site, there are better long-term plans for it to hold it in public trust.
Okay. And just to confirm one final question, there are no...
Back to the point, Tract M would provide direct access into that site when it develops. So we had required access. So I'm sorry, I got a little off track there.
No, so the icy, so the intent is for that to be an access point in the event that, so is... Okay. So is there, is it fair to say that's considered a future development site that could become a home lot at some point, or no?
I don't believe that's the case, no. There are very strict riders on that property for the city to accept it.
For Tract M? That's the one I was...
Oh, Tract M, that would not become a home site. No, that will be dedicated to the city.
Dedicated to the city?
Yeah.
And then there were no other tracks for potential future development requested as part of the plat, correct?
Correct.
There were no, not no other, there were none?
There were none, yes.
Okay. I just, the references for Tract N and Tract Q, and maybe it's the topography, they look like they're steep cliffs? Is that what Tract N, and they're on the western edge?
Yes, yes. Those are, those largely just encompass the steeper slopes in the west and southwest portion of the site.
So the topography renders them unable for future development? There's no way you can build on those?
Yeah. The way our code is written, you, the way our code is written, you can't develop those.
Okay. Okay. And then I apologize, I know Mr. Truhune was on the list to public comment, and I said, please wait. So I don't know if Mr. Truhune, you want to speak to anything on behalf of the applicant? Or anything at all? Now is the time for the applicant to conclude, if you want to offer anything else.
No, no comment, Mr. Truhune.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, I appreciate everyone's time today pursuant to the Shelton Municipal Code, as well as state law. I believe I have 10 days to issue this decision. So this one will be done quickly. And if I have any, or excuse me, you're... And if I have any, or excuse me, you're going to send me those additional materials that we discussed. We added exhibit 17 through 20 today. You already, you already gave me Joe Kegel's email, which is 17. And then we just want to make sure that the applicant receives copies of those new exhibits, as well as that they are posted on the website after this hearing so that all materials are posted in a transparent way.
Okay.
And then my decision will include language specific to if there is any appeal available. I do not believe there is an appeal available under the Shelton Municipal Code for this action, but I will double-check that, Mr. Dose. Dose, are you aware of there being an administrative appeal?
There is a reconsideration clause, so if anyone, the applicant, member of the public, the city, feels there's something in error in the decision, they can request a reconsideration by the hearings examiner, but have to state the facts by which they think an error was made. And then beyond that, it is a direct appeal to the courts.
Thank you, yes, that's my recollection now of your municipal code. So yes, that will all be laid out in my decision. So if whomever may be unhappy with the decision, reconsideration would be your option, or else direct appeal under the Land Use Petition Act to the Superior Court. And that, again, will be in the decision, flagging that for the public. And anyone who spoke today has standing associated with a potential appeal, as well as the potential to receive a copy of that decision, is my understanding. And a copy of the decision will be, to the extent you provided your contact information, so I encourage you to do so. A copy of the decision will be posted in all the normal public notice places as well at that time. So anything else to come before the hearings examiner today? Nope. All right, with that, I will close the hearing at 2:55 PM. Thank you all for your time.